Good evening, I'd like to call to order the monthly city council meeting. It is 7:01 PM on December 18th, 2019. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? First item on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar. Items one through 11. Is there any questions or is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, there's an item number 12 has been added, is amended.
Oh, I thought that was, I thought that was at law. Okay, items one through 12. I thought that was at law.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the consent calendar items one through 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Open forum, is there anybody here this evening who would like to speak, ask question, or comment to the council on a matter that is not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll close the public for the open forum, and we will move on to item D1, under reports, city administrator clerk report. Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor Hedman. Good evening, members of the council. Tonight, I just wanted to provide for your information, some employee anniversary recognition that we recently did, a couple of weeks ago, for our employees who had at least five years of service. They were presented with a plaque, and I will just read our list quickly, to kind of congratulate them for their service and thank them for their commitment to the city of Nisswa. So, our police chief Craig Taylor has 20 years of service. Terry Waleen, our pickle factory manager, is at 20 years of service. Terry Hanson is with our Parks and Rec Department, 15 years. Mike Wagner, with our wastewater department, is 10 years. Tom Blommer, our public works director, is 10 years. Bill Schultz, our public works maintenance employee, is five years. Maggie Wentler, our finance specialist in our clerk's office, has five years of service. And Mike Deck, our public works lead maintenance technician, has five years of service as well. Want to thank them again for their service. We do have a couple of employees that will be added to this list here next month, and we'll be working to more consistently recognize them on their anniversaries and just acknowledge, take a moment to acknowledge their contribution here. So, that is all I have for updates tonight, unless you have questions.
Any questions for the city administrator? Hearing none, we will move on to D2, city attorney. Anything?
I have nothing.
Mr. Harrison?
I have no specific to report.
Okay. D3, city engineer, Mr. Hallen?
We have no specific to report, most of us.
We will then move on to new business. Under new business, item E1, resolution approving final 2019 tax levy collectible in 2020 in the amount of $2,465,015. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Seconded by Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment, that we went from 9 percent down to the final levy of 5.22 percent, almost half.
Any other comments or questions on motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the record, I kind of forgot, but for the record, for the city council meeting this evening, Councilman Gary Johnson is not with us, so we have three council members, Ryan Hoff and Jacobson and Mayor, and that's the administrator clerk, so just a note, side note there. E2, approve city, approve 2020 city Nisswa budget.
I will move to approve the 2020 city of Nisswa budget as proposed.
Seconded by Jacobson.
Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And again, thank you Jenny for, and the staff for all the hard work putting that together. It's a big project. And I think you did this citizens well with getting to the final number that we're at with the, especially in light of and in lieu of the things that, as a growing city, there are some things that need to be added, and we're not staying the same size, and we're not shrinking, and so with those additions in play and included, I think that's pretty reasonable. So, thank you, thank everybody for their hard work. Item E3, petition by Julie Johnson to vacate Pine Avenue in the flat of Nisswa Park. I would just start out by saying that there is, I think there is question and about by the neighborhood as to exactly why the petition is being denied, and then, or is seeking to be denied, and then, and then also, to what extent the city may be able to lead and suggest what possibly can be done to accomplish their goals, if possible. So, it is, I don't know, is there anyone here who would like to, would like to speak on both this?
Maybe, maybe we could find out what Tom's recommendation was first, and then we could understand a little better why. Okay.
Hi.
That'd be fine.
We understand.
So, Julie, you hold on, we're gonna have the city attorney just give a little insight.
Yeah, John, this came to our attention at the last meeting, and prior to that, because this application, that was happening at the same time, another location in the city. It came to our attention that this action potentially affected the ingress and egress rights of a landlord, of letting this proposed vacant, or opposed to be vacant street. So, at the last meeting, we decided we'd spin this off to allow Jenny to have a discussion with the effective property owner about that, and sort through the issue of that property and see what his opinion was about this. And at that meeting, you and Jenny and I were comfortable, I think, with the implications unknown to us about how, if this action were taken, if this street vacation was done, how that potentially, there are ways could potentially impact his ingress and egress, and that easement that is, that exists there, that also may enter property, and subsequently cause title problems for him in the future, and of course, that would be an unwitting action by the city, and because there are true sort of laws in the air on that, thus the recommendation not to do this, because of uncertainty of that problem.
So, if we created an unwitting situation, as you described, then we could be on the hook for fixing it for him, potentially?
Well, I don't know about that so much, but even before talking about what to fix is, potentially causing a problem, or could cause a title issue for somebody, it's something that I would recommend that we put on that roll, whether you talk about a certain thing that fixes or corrects the property or something.
Okay.
Is, is there a way that we can amend what we're doing tonight, or do we have to, the way it's, I mean, can we change, like, for example, instead of doing the whole thing, do part of it up to where that problem could potentially exist? And then revisit that at a future time?
Jenny did ask me that question, I wonder, and I think Julie mentioned, for meetings to me, that this originated as a partial, and it turned out to be a whole, and so I'm making that recommendation of a whole. But, and Jenny did ask me that earlier this week, although this could be amended sort of on the fly, and reduce the ask, so to speak. In my opinion, it's a whole, because these vacation notice provisions are fairly stringent. You are essentially altering that application, because I think we do need to, and I'm sorry, it's technical, but I think we do need to, if the council holds not to grant this vacation tonight, then the applicants would have to start with the amendment petition, asking for a smaller chunk of that application.
Okay. Would it be, what sort of options would the city have as far as saying help offset another application fee? What, what could, what could the city possibly offer there?
Well, yes, I'm...
We could, we could.
There you go, sorry. You know, the, the application fee in these situations, just like all of our application fees, are meant to offset staff time taken to evaluate applications like this. Because the groundwork is done largely by the applicant in a situation like this, i.e. supplying names and addresses of people who are entitled to notice in that plaque, and because all that groundwork is done, the city staff likely has little, if anything, to do to process a new application, and thus, the need for a new application fee, and it might not be there because that groundwork is done, and could be applied to a new effort.
So, it could just waive it?
Yeah, I mean, I, yes, you could, I'm not telling you, you know, that you do that, but, but would it be okay in a situation like this, given what I just said? Yeah, I think so. Okay, thank you. Now, please, please state your name and address for the record.
Julie Johnson, address at Birch Avenue, 2607A Birch Avenue.
Is that microphone on? Is the blue light on?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
We, we understand the reasoning behind. We had originally asked for a partial vacate, and we were encouraged to do the whole thing for some reason from someone here, so we did. And we're very happy going back to the partial vacate that just goes from Birch up through, behind Mr. Dreisick and our house, including just three property owners. So, to do that amendment, and whatever we need to do for that process, would be fine. Is that accurate?
We would have to come to a wage, that $500 fee, if we have that original application on, so, the groundwork is already, just a reworking, the application.
Brad, I spoke to Jenny about this. I, we had gotten an email from Julie.
Correct, I think we all got it.
Yeah, and I, and I contacted Julie, and I, and I, we spoke, I spoke with Jenny about it and stuff, and I didn't see, I don't see that there's a reason we couldn't waive it. I mean, like Tom said, I mean, 99 percent of the work's done, it's just basically refilling So, and I certainly don't want to see us get in the middle of a landlock that we, we create, so.
Absolutely.
Question? The way I read this, I don't have a problem with the vacation at all, period. The question is that one parcel, and my question to the attorney is, is there any way that you can envision that he can get an easement or whatever, so we can eliminate that as a problem?
I had three possible solutions, I'm not an expert, but one is to widen the easement, one is for, Luke had approached me about buying one of my properties, but Nick, who lives in a blue house, has made mention that he would be willing to sell a portion of his land to. I'm not saying they want to do that, or can't do that, I, that's just a possibility that has been tossed around.
It would seem to me that if everybody's in agreement, that the only thing holding it up is the one parcel, that we could technically table for 60 days to allow them to work their, their magic, if you wanted to use that terminology.
Well, that's only if they want to.
And that way, the, the money for the permit is still valid, you don't have to do anything there. The only thing, you'd have to have Julie agree to the 60-day tabling, because we, we run into a time constraint. If you, if you do that, I'd go to a table.
I don't mind that, but I don't want to speak for people that this, you know, I don't, I don't think they want the pressure of making that decision right now, maybe...
Please.
Can he come up to the podium, please?
Come up to the podium, please. Something else I would like to do here, before we get too far from what was just said, and that is, we, we have received a request for a specific action, and if, and if we were, I mean, in a way, I would be, a tabling sometimes can work very good, but this is actually neat, this would actually be a new...
New business.
New business application, so I think, in, for that reason, tabling may not be the best scenario. May, possibly waiving the fee, and a new application, and would then be resent out to the neighborhood, and go through that process, which we are required to do, would, like, would possibly be the way to go. And I know, Tom, you, I mean, could we table it, and then do something a little different, or do we, I mean, what's the best way for us to go? You put this one up, do you have, can you do that? Your pointer, use your pointer.
To table it, to...
Jenny has...
Mike really wants to use the pointer.
Where is it? I just want to make a follow-up. Why that, why was...
Okay.
Okay, so, I'm trying to answer that question, so we're talking about this area here, we're talking about this easement, right?
Correct.
The city vacates this, and titles this land, and it's sort of a little bit more , and the part of the application where we're looking here, the partial that we're looking at, would just be my three properties, Julie's, Julie's, Mr. Watson's here, up to the parceling question. So, when we're asked, asked potentially for a partial vacation, that's what we'd be talking about, leaving questionable property, you know, alone. But my original question, Mr. Jacobson brought up, was something about improvement, is there not an easement, are there any good advice for that, and why does that not come?
Well, there's easement here, right? For the, for the partial?
Yeah.
The only easement here is two here. Why does that easement not come? Why would we be looking for another easement solution?
Well, I don't think we would, that was kind of what I thought you were just brought up. Because this, this here, was this, if this were to be vacated, now we've got a gap here, right?
Okay.
And nobody owns it, so how are we going to do this here?
This would, I mean, very probable easements, because that, the city, even if it were to vacate this, as you know, my recommendation...
...the action within that 60 days, it's deemed approved without us doing anything. And we're at that point now, so we have to take an action tonight to deny or approve what you've -- that's the technicality.
And that's absolutely, you know, and that's set up to protect the citizen so that the council cannot receive that request and then just never bring it forward. So that's why this law says a city or township or whatever has a certain period of time so that you couldn't be put off forever indefinitely. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we deny the petition by Julie Anderson to vacate the Pine Avenue plat as recommended by the planning and zoning.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Second, but Jacobson, question on motion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, do you want a motion on the fee?
Yes.
I move that if the petition comes in for Pine Street in substantially the same form as we see it today with some corrections made to it, that we waive the fee.
Second.
Second. Any question on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Thanks everybody for your comment.
Mr. Mayor, question for you. To move things along a little quicker since we're starting over, would it be okay if the city administrator just called the members of the, say, the Public Works Committee, just asked, just to poll them whether they are okay with it rather than having to wait for a whole nother meeting to come through? Would that be acceptable or should we?
Well, the scenario we went through before didn't really work because we went to the planning and zoning one month, then we had to wait one month to get in front of the next group before we could even get in front of you. So it automatically exceeded the 60 days.
Well, I understand that, but the problem there was, I believe, there was a hiccup with when P&amp;Z met and then when Public Works could meet because normally, I'm trying to remember that, when it happened. There was a reason our Public Works meeting was canceled, I'm trying to remember what it was and I can't.
So your idea is a good idea if that can happen?
So if we could do that, if that would, I mean, if the Public Works members, the reason I'm saying is when we went through this at Public Works, we honestly, and I've talked to Tom about it, I talked to him today about it, we can't see a reason why.
I don't think you can do that because of the open meeting law.
We would never want to not let it be vacated, that's why.
I just wanted to-
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to see if we can move the process faster.
I don't think you can do that because of the open meeting law, but what you can do is ask if anybody has any reservations, if they're of the same opinion as they were before.
Okay, because we meet January eight.
I think it's the eighth.
What bodies meet before the next council, I don't know?
Absolutely. We do, I'm just-
They do, yes, yeah. So we will work on trying to get them on both the next agendas. Usually we do one and then we get it to the other because it's just kind of a layered effect to make sure we're gathering the right information and going through the process, but I don't see why we can't get them both out in January and then get to the council.
Providing that the applicants get their work done in a timely fashion.
Yep, and publication notice requirements, I have to look at that from a calendar perspective. Tom?
And assuming they get that petition in, then we can modify that resolution so it's ready for the, it's a pretty easy deal to fix that, so it's ready for the next council so we can streamline things, yes.
Good, all right.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's why I asked, I wasn't sure.
Always good to ask. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda this evening, item E4, recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding rezoning application from SBG Properties, which is Minnesota Inboard, I believe. Any presentation or info?
There was one consideration that the P&amp;Z had. The owner and the applicant are two different entities and we wanted to make sure that we were not recommending rezoning a parcel that the applicant didn't own. So we asked that a letter be received by the city saying with the owner that the application was fine with them. I assume that's been received?
That has been received. They also did sign, the owner did sign the application itself. But yes, we do also have a letter, so they are supportive of the rezone and there's no concerns from staff in that regard.
Okay, thank you Jenny. Council, any questions? Is there a motion?
I move the approval of the rezoning of approximately 7.33 acre tract of land from urban residential to highway business. As the pin number is 28140679 as presented.
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Ryan.
Question on the, questions on the motion?
I do have one, I do have one question and I think it's probably fairly self-explanatory, but according to the picture that we show, it actually shows the property owns the street, that the property line goes across the street and back, and I just want clarification on that.
That would be correct if we get the application from the applicant who wants to build, who brings in the pot fire and stuff like that, that'll take, taking care of that.
Okay, so will they, would they be turning over some street then right away?
Probably.
And from the county JIS map, it's not always exactly accurate, so it's, that's probably what it is as well.
Yeah, there is one street that runs in around Lake.
Yeah.
It's possible there could be some interference there.
Slightly, yes, slight issue there.
Okay, that answers my questions. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the clerk or administrator to publish a summary ordinance publication of the change.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ryan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Item E5, request from the Nisswa Fire Relief Association to increase retirement contribution level. And I see our fire chief is here this evening, Mr. Bailey?
Good evening. No response.
Good evening, aye.
Thank you. So the Relief Association is a group of members as part of our fire department that manages our money. We have an account that gets invested through Stifel Nichols and our accounts have done well over the last few years and we've been able to take raises. This year we're requesting to go from $3,700 to $4,000 a year for our Relief Association, which is, get us down to about 110% vested. So we're still over vested, not as over vested as we were, but we're still over vested. We did a countywide report, I'm not sure if you saw this or not, Crow Wing County is the average is 111% vested, so we're asking your approval to move to $4,000.
Okay, thank you, sir. So just because I do not understand like the full process to that, so is there, and you may have said something in the beginning, but you were soft enough, I didn't quite catch it, is there, is there an entity that you work with?
Yes, yes.
That recommends either that-
So we have two of them. We have an investor company, Stifel Nichols, and then we use Justin Clausen as an accountant. And then everything goes through the state auditor's office also.
Okay, and both of those entities have?
Yes, that's where the numbers came, that you see in your packet.
Okay.
So there's zero contribution from the city at $4,000. And if you look at that, we could go all the way down to like 99% vested and there'd still be zero contribution dollars from the city. But we're only asking to go to 4,000, so it's a $300 raise. And I liked your comment earlier, we're not a city that's getting smaller, we're a city that's getting bigger, which means, you'll probably see my little face again because call volume has really gone up. So we're working harder.
I will say, you guys are busy. When I look at your report every month, I go, I cannot believe how many calls you guys get.
Yes, we turn a lot of calls.
It's amazing.
Isn't that right, Mr. Jacobson?
Right.
Yeah.
And you know, I, I won't, that's another discussion.
Anyway.
Something else. No, I think we're, I think as a city, we're blessed. So that's the only question I have, I'm not sure you understood. Anyone else?
I got a couple of questions, Sean. Interest dividends, $60,000, that's what the fund currently brings in or brought in or projected to bring in?
So what that is, that's our 2% monies we get from the state. So 2% of your fire coverage of your insurance, we get a check. This year it was $57,800 and some dollars. That bounces all over the place. It's never been lower than 56, but it's been as high as 62 through the years that I've been part of the Relief Association. This year it was 57,895. Don't quote me to that number, but it was somewhere right in there.
Okay.
So yeah, that's contribute, that comes from the state.
And the municipal is what you get for contracts and stuff, or?
$15,000, that's your, your contribution, Lake Edwards, Lake Shore, Sibley, Pelican, Zellul five, and Pequot.
Right, so that's, okay. And then state aid, fire state aid are pretty self-explanatory.
Yep.
And I know you're at 100 and, you'll still be at 109%. Here's my concern, looking at, you guys are at 120% roughly in 2018. We did increase it last year to 3,700. We've dropped 3%. Para, police and fire para used to be extremely well funded. And in return, in the late 90s, early 2000s, they started to really give some massive interest bumps to the retirees at the time. And right now, police and fire para, thanks to 2008's downturn, the stocks and everything, the investments took a heck of a hit. And they weren't funded well enough to absorb it, so now it's hurting statewide, it's hurting. I just don't want to see you guys fall into that by accident. And, you know, you took a 3% drop from last year because you were at roughly 120% 2018.
Yeah, roughly.
And you're at 100, and how many people retired last year between the?
Maybe, I'm not sure when Zim went, Danny Zimmerman, it might have been one or zero.
Okay, so you, one person left and it knocked you and your fund, but your fund decreased 3%. See where I'm getting?
But are, if you-
I'm just-
Yeah, I see where you're getting, but it would be, how would I even go about that? I don't, I don't know how to answer that.
But Mike, but, because if you do, my understanding of how this fund works is if it, if it does drop below a certain percentage, Jenny, you can help me out here maybe, but somebody can, that's, if it drops below a certain percentage and we have a number of retirements or we have to make up the difference now.
No, okay, that's where you're misled. This fund right here is, covers 100% of all our liabilities, AKA fireman retirements. So let's take Mr. Geiki example, 30 years in, he decides to step off tomorrow, that will not change our numbers at all because he has already covered liability wise 100%. See what I mean? We pay Mr. Geiki out, if he were to retire tomorrow, it's not going to change our liability numbers because we're already 100% funded, we're actually 110% funded.
Right.
So we're 10% over funded to pay everybody out at 20 years today.
But Sean's question is if, let's say, we stay at 3,700 and in a year that goes to be 97%, is the city on the hook for the difference?
At this point, no.
No, but I'm saying in theory, if 3,700 equals 97%, there's a 3% gap.
Yeah.
Correct, and that's the city's liability.
Until they run the form next year, I couldn't give you that answer. It's not a, I don't feel it's a fair, a fair movement. We're at 110 now, I mean, right now, the way it's set up, we could all go out there tomorrow and be killed and pay our families 100% of what the money we have coming and you would still be sitting on 10% of our money. Does that make sense?
So if the council approved 4,600, there's a, there's a gap there, right?
Yes.
Which is the city's portion?
There's still no contribution to the city, from the city at that point.
So we talked about this though, so when is that trigger happen?
We didn't, we didn't print it out that far because we've never gone that low. Because I don't know, is that going to be 88%? I don't know, the accountant didn't go any further than 99%.
I just don't want to see you guys end up in the same place that the state's parafund is, and I'm sure you guys-
And we, we don't, we're not in a, in a state fund at all.
No, I understand that, but the principle is that your fund operates the same way pretty much.
Yes, yes.
And so I just don't want to see voting yourself benefits, so to speak, from the coffers to the point that, oh-oh.
Yeah, well, and here's-
When the math comes out and then, because I don't want to see you guys work hard enough for us and I don't want to see you guys-
Well, here's, here's the, the nuts and bolts of it. Every, they meet once a quarter and they go over these numbers, not these numbers, they go over the investment numbers.
Okay.
And in December they make the decision, that's the reason I'm here, can we take a raise or can we take a decrease, what do we do? And that's why we're here today because it'll support a raise today, clearly.
Okay.
If it goes down next year, well, that's, they're all aware of that, but we feel it's fair to our firefighters to get every available dollar if they choose to retire that they can get because they worked for it.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear.
That's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah. That's all I had.
Thank you. Anyone else, council members? Okay. Action?
I'll move to allow the Nisswa Fire Relief Association to increase the retirement contribution level to request the demo.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Second? I'll second that. Discussion on the motion?
I personally would like to see Jenny sit down and look at the numbers and come back and give us her opinion rather than doing a snapshot tonight. Not that I, not that you wouldn't get it, but I'm not that conversant about it, I don't know how conversant you are, just, just a feeling that you should be looking at the numbers first.
A question with that. What, I'm just trying to figure, because I don't know, because this, we haven't gotten, ever gotten very deep into this sort of conversation. What, what, well, obviously the council has authority to approve or deny, but if the fireman's association and their accounting firm says that it is okay to do that, I would, I would trust in their, I would trust in their determination.
Do they need our approval to do it though?
Well, I don't think it'd be here if they did.
So here's, here's how it was explained to me. If you talk to Rose at the state auditor's office, she's the head queen, we can do any number we want. You're only on the hook for what you have agreed to. You've agreed to 3,700. So if we wanted to go to 6,000 tomorrow and this fund belly-ups, you're only on the hook to 3,700, which we want to play nice in the sandbox, we feel this is a fair, a fair shake. We don't sit down and just wing some numbers on a piece of paper, these are paid for numbers. I mean, it cost us an invoice to get this and they say it's good. You know, our funding ratio is within state guidelines, it's actually below state guidelines to keep it, you know, firm. It's never been a problem in the past. I, I really don't see a problem or any hook that a city would be with on moving to this. Mrs. Max was at our meeting, she got to see what they got to see. We're just here to ask, you know, where, where do we go? We'd like to go up 3,000 or $300 to $4,000 and there's no contribution from you guys at all.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Jenny. Are you, do you feel confident or not?
Are you comfortable or no opinion, yes opinion, no opinion?
I'm comfortable that, that they're funded appropriately. I don't know a lot about all of the mechanics of this, so, so it is a little bit new territory for me. Sean and I have had conversations on, you know, the, the relief has historically been funded, you know, at about 120%, so, so that is lowering that, that cushion. We talked at the meeting about them looking at having kind of a, a process for how they make that decision, so it's not just how one group feels in a given year versus another group, it's, you know, what will make sense, which was part of why they pulled the county information and they pulled some of that. I don't know a lot about it and I can certainly do some more homework in the future to be a little more up to speed with that. I, I don't think at 100 and basically 110, it's a, it's a concern for the city portion of that, but I will follow up with, with Sean and/or the relief to follow up on questions because I'm not, I'm a little bit fuzzier now on some information that we talked about so, but that's not, I don't think that will impact this tonight.
Question, if, I don't know, from the response that I'm hearing here, if this doesn't go the way that you want it to go tonight, does that set you back a year or can this get redone next month or?
We've never asked to retro anything in the fire service, we came in December-
Right, can you raise it at any time throughout the year?
And we, no, we raised it on the first of the year. So these funds aren't for next year, no.
Right.
I don't want to throw any options out there because I'd like you guys to decide tonight.
Yep.
But could we come in January? Sure. Could we come in February? I mean, more than likely, if you say no tonight, you're going to see a relief officer in here until you, until they get, you know, the response they'd like to see, because it's funded, it's all in the numbers.
But truly though, unless somebody retires between now and the next council meeting, I don't think that, it doesn't matter.
And even if, even if someone does retire between now and the next, it's not hurting us, we're still funded.
No, but it's, it's not as if somebody missed, you know, would miss for a whole year, it's, you know, it's, because we don't have an issue.
So the guys, the guys get their money on their anniversary dates, but the numbers go up January 1st.
Yeah, just if your request is-
So my anniversary date is August, so-
For a full calendar year type thing?
Yeah, so from January 1 to January 1.
Jenny is comfortable with the numbers and not with the rest of it, I'm comfortable with her and the numbers, she knows more about numbers than I do.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
So what I would, what I would like to recommend, Sean, is that, that you do get together with Jenny and just have some, just kind of take the questions that have come up here tonight and look to get answers for those so that we get some education as to how this process fully works. Because I think that makes it, I think the hesitation tonight was the fact that we don't attend those, we're not part of the association, we don't attend it.
Exactly.
We don't under, we don't fully understand it. And I think Mr. Ryan was very correct in saying, we don't want to see that fund-
Dwindle.
Dwindle. And because of that, if we understand it, then we will, that will help us-
Yep.
-simplify things next time we're out there.
And Mrs. Max and I have had a couple of conversations. I'm not a part of the Relief Association because I cannot be because I'm the fire chief. I can, I attend all the meetings, but I don't have a say. So I think what you'll see is the relief board dealing with the council. Because I, I just think it's a fair move because then when you have these questions, they're, they're supposed to be the experts.
Yeah, well, that would be, that could be excellent, maybe we line up something.
I mean, we've always done it with the fire chief for all the other years, here I am.
Well, you know, and I appreciate, you know, I appreciate what you're doing, you know, I mean, I think you are a very proactive fire chief and, you know, I appreciate that and I suspect that many do, so, you know, thank you for that. But, you know, just like you don't have all the answers, we don't have all the answers and it would be nice to know a few more answers.
Exactly.
Because then, when people understand things, then it's easier to make decisions.
Oh yeah, it's a lot easier. I mean, even when she said in the meeting the other night, she's, we're all just like, you know, what, there's just so many questions and it's just, it's complex.
So maybe what we need to do is have the, some leadership come explain it to us, do a little presentation and then we'll be a step better.
Do you have a number for the council from the state? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's just Rose, the same lady you guys deal with. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Sean, nice evening. Next on the agenda, item E6, request from the Brainer JC's Go Lake Access Closure on January 25th, 2020. Now, is, question that I have there is, I thought in the reading, it said Grandview Lodge Access, is that the?
Yeah, Grant, the access.
The public access located at, I mean, for, yeah.
Yeah, well, and I know this is technical and it's like, oh, shut up, but the goal, the Grandview Access is technically not a public access.
Yes, it is.
It is an access for, by the plat, it's an access for the people who live across the street on East and West Nikolas. That's the way it's platted. So if you go back in those hundreds of years, and Tom, maybe you're, maybe you're the one who's going to say, just be quiet. But, but the plat gives easements all along that street and, and other places in the city. And they, to my understanding, are not public. Some may be, but those along there are part of a plat which give landowners in that neighborhood access to the water. So, that being said, I just, the only reason I bring it up is, I don't, you know, I think the city maybe needs a, can make a help out here, but I think we just need to be careful and maybe we need a better understanding, what kind of access is that truly? Because the DNR doesn't own it, it's not a DNR public access.
Correct.
And it certainly is not a boat access, it is a walk to the water access. And according to the plats, I believe, it is only, only for the landowners across the street, also on the north side of East and West Linden. I could be wrong about that. I haven't hired an attorney to search it all out, but to my, best of my understanding, that's what it is, that's what that, what those are. So, that being said, moving on, there were, I do know there was several issues last year with people going out to the fishing contest from that site, a lot of, a lot of traffic and a lot of junk that was left on the lake. Not, and I'm sorry, not for the JC's fishing contest, but for other, JC's I believe, done a pretty darn good job with, with handling that, with cleanup. Some of the other events, I think, were troublesome. And so I just think we, however- other events, I think, were troublesome. And so I just think we, however, we should take those things into consideration as we talk about this. So with that, council?
Well, if you're correct, and I don't know if you're correct or not.
I don't know either.
You can put a barricade up at the edge of the right of way and stop the cars from going down there without going down the property. So you can block it off one way or another, I would assume.
Yeah. I mean, if it's a problem and technically could be.
I'll move to approve the request from the J.C.'s about the Go Lake Access at Grandview Lodge closer on January 25th, as outlined in the letter dated December 18th, 2019.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Hawke. Question, has, and I presume it has, the police chief been notified of this and he's, would, could have a officer available or?
Yes.
For this, for the duty that was requested there?
Yes.
So that'd be a city officer and not a county officer?
Correct.
Paid for by the J.C.
Yes. They'll pay for the cost of the officer.
Just to make, I presumed it was probably all taken care of, but just wanted to clarify.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Tom, you're so good at just whiten your lip. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? That motion carries. Item E7, recommendation to hire Matthew Thompson as Nisswa City Police Officer.
If I could briefly, I just wanted, I apologize, I forgot to mention in my memo, as Councilmember Jacobson has asked for in the past, but Matthew is a current part-time officer for the city of Lake Shore. He has been with the State Patrol, and so he has some nice experience to bring with him and is familiar with the area. And we are looking forward to his hire, if so approved by the council.
I'll make the motion that we approve the recommendation to hire Matthew Thompson as a Nisswa Police Officer.
Second?
Yes.
I think Mike was maybe first, but it was close.
Would the maker of motion like to make, the offer is contingent upon successful completion of the background check, physiological exam, and physical exam?
Correct. I'll amend my motion to reflect such. I'll amend my second.
And I'll just note that since this memo was done last week, all of those have been completed and are good to go. But yes.
Never, okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And if at all possible, it would be nice if Mr. Officer Thompson was on duty the night of a city council, that he could stop by and say hi or something, and just kind of introduce himself.
As the rookie, he'll probably be down at the access on.
So I can just stop talking.
That's what rookies are for. I'm sorry. That's how it works. Loops done his share of those, right? There you go.
Okay. Next on the agenda, item E8, recommendations from Public Works to, or regarding a payloader purchase. We have some information in our packet about that. And I guess I have a question for Tom, and that is, just want to make sure, my question is around making sure that the machine is big enough to do the job. So we don't make a purchase, then find out that it go to push something and the wheels just start spinning and so on, and it doesn't go anywhere. I did note that there's, the county or somebody has one and so on, but just looking for some assurance that. And then, I don't know if we need a snow blower or what. I mean, we've had one and I don't know.
You can explain. We were talking, we talked about that at the meeting.
Okay. So Tom, if you could kind of run through that quick for us, I'd just like to.
Well, what we're looking to do is improve upon the tractor. The tractor currently weighs about 20,000 pounds, as you see it going down the road. The payloader that we're looking at would weigh over 38,000 pounds, significantly heavier. It's the largest in that chassis size class. Okay, so when you start stepping up from that point, you start getting into things that would appear in gravel pits like Anderson Brothers, or somebody has, you know, really big machines that really shouldn't be on the road probably. So this is about as large a machine as we could actually use, I think, for what we're doing.
Okay. So, and without going back in the paperwork, is it the county or some other city has one?
Well, actually, there's several. While we're considering it, so is the city of Pequot Lakes. We're actually demoing the machine today. We're demoing the machine today. Yesterday was at Pequot Lakes. The day before was in Brainerd. So these three cities are all considering that machine. City of Wadena purchased two. Crow Wing County has an older one, but they have at least one.
But my question is, my question is just, are you, that you're comfortable that it will do the job that's needed?
Oh, yeah. I think so. You know, actually, our tractor has done a fairly well, a good job. It's just when we have the really heavy events like the one we had earlier this year, it takes a long time because you've got to take everything in very small bites. This will allow us to hopefully take larger bites to move it along faster during a heavy event.
And then I would, I don't know that I saw it listed, but I would assume there's probably a dirt bucket with it.
It comes standard with a dirt bucket, and that's about three and a half yards.
Okay.
And then we have a light materials bucket for snow, which is 5.75, I think it is. So significantly bigger than what, I have a big bucket I put on the front of the tractor. It's bigger than that. So.
Okay. And then probably just one last. So thank you for that information. Last question, and I, it seems like there was some word about it some months back, but the big snow pusher that was for the tractor, did we sell that now?
We'll sell it with the tractor or sell it at the same time as the tractor. It should have a pretty good resale value to it. It's, if there's nothing wrong with it, other than because the payloader is quite a bit heavier, some of the bracketry or whatever that connects it probably isn't heavy duty enough to be on a payloader. So that's one of the reasons we're looking to move up. The other is the machine, or the wing that would go on the payloader also has some safety measures in it to keep it from damaging curbs. So those couple of reasons were why we wanted to consider a different snowing for the payloader. Plus, it's slightly wider to cover the track of the payloader. The payloader is slightly wider than the tractor.
Okay. It makes sense to get accessories that are meant for the machine.
Yeah.
Can you touch on the snow blower?
Oh, a lot of cities, including like the city of Wadena, most, a lot of them will get a snow blower for the front of the payloader. We currently have our snow blower on the back of our tractor. Problem is, is a snow blower on a payloader is a very expensive machine because it has its own engine on it. They're a six-figure machine. We don't use the snow blower enough, I feel, to justify that. What we would like to do instead is, we're planning on upgrading our ditch mowing tractor next year. We would place a snow blower on that because then the cost would be more around $30,000.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. There's upcoming discussion here soon with the Nisswa school and sidewalks and things, and that's probably one place I think about, snow thrower. Also, maybe just tougher things may need to get pushed on Main Street. We don't have to go into that now, but just thanks for the information. Appreciate it.
Yeah, that extra road that we're, well, we've already started plowing it that way. Lakers Lane down past the school. We're now going to start plowing similar to how we do Main Street. Well, that all has to be done by this machine. It can't be done by one of our two big plow trucks. So it's going to add about 25 percent to the workload of this machine.
Sure. Okay. Thanks for your input.
Yeah.
Or your information. That's great. Counsel, any questions for the Public Works Director?
Well, really a question for Jenny. Two questions for Jenny here. At the bottom of the first page, you talked about reallocating the funds from the fire department to the general fund. Would you explain that a little bit more, how you tend to finance this?
I sure can. On the, let me see, the fifth page of information in your packet, it's a lot to go through, but basically there's two pieces to the equipment matrix program that we're looking to implement. And a big piece of that is this payloader question. So we have included in our 2020 budget a certain amount for operating costs, which would apply in part to the equipment. And then with the fire department, the funds that are coming back from the fire department for the purchase of the truck from last year, it's just over $200,000 that they're repaying over, hopefully five years instead of seven. That would just, at this point, go back into our general fund, unreserved fund. And what I would suggest is that we take that money and reallocate it into this equipment program so that we're basically using it twice, in essence. We don't need it for our general fund reserves. And then that will help fund this program over the long term and give us the monies to be able to, in a given year, spend down a little bit and then add to it and it's, you know, kind of a back and forth. So that's how I, that's how we propose to pay for it.
So the fire department is going to pay back over five years. They're going to use that money to help pay this down.
Yes.
And until that is accomplished, it's coming out of the unreserved fund?
Just for 2020, the unreserved fund will pay approximately $24,000. So this fund would be in debt to that until 2021. And then it will be back to positive and we will continue positive throughout. But because this is such a large purchase for this next year, and we haven't built anything into this yet, that's why there'll be a little bit of a timing difference. But yes, if we.
Well, he can buy it but not use it for another year.
Yeah.
How fast can you get one?
If we order it tomorrow, it's 10 weeks.
The second question for Jenny.
Yes.
Part two. The deal is contingent upon selling it on the open, the used machine on the open market.
Yes.
If you're saying 50 to 60,000 dollars, you anticipate, if you sell for 50, does that money go back into the general fund?
It will because we will be writing the check for the, some kind of deposit or something for the payloader. So we will want to repay that.
It won't go into the unallocated fund?
It will repay the general fund which paid.
The unallocated.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Other than that, can't we use credit card?
Get some miles on that. Yeah.
Yours.
I have the check limit.
You can have the miles. I did have a question that came to mind. This was there and it's gone.
Mr. Mayor, you want a motion?
Yeah.
I'll move that city council approves the purchase of a John Deere 624L payloader, including the extended warranty from the Sarsel contract for a price of $213,901, plus purchase a snow wing attachment at a cost of $18,484.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ryan. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry.
Thank you.
Tom, I know what my question was, Tom. So regarding the big green tractor.
Yes.
And putting it on government.com or wherever it goes, is, are we sure that that will turn out better than if we trade it in or we look to?
Yes.
Because sometimes, sometimes things can go really cheap.
Actually.
I'm just looking for, make sure that we've thought through those.
What I'm going to probably ask is that we consider possibly consigning it with the John Deere dealer in Wadena. It's a farm tractor. And Dan Boat, who we deal with quite frequently with that kind of equipment, has said there's a good demand for that machine because of its size and its low hours. So that's who told me what the value would be. The payloader comes through a construction equipment dealer up in Grand Rapids. They don't have a market for farm tractors.
Sure.
So we either have to sell it ourselves or we could possibly consign it.
Okay.
But under consignment, usually a consignee gets 10 to 20 percent of the cost.
I believe they would probably fare better though than gov deals, just because gov deals is not going to be a bunch of farmers looking for a tractor.
You'll be very familiar with gov deals, but sometimes you can buy something there for 10 cents on the dollar.
Yeah. You know, we can reserve it too. You know, we can reserve amount in there to prevent that from happening. So.
Is there an option to just try and outright sell it ourselves before we try and consign it? Just so we can save that 10 to 20 percent?
We could.
How about, how about just kind of check into it, find out exactly what the sale commission is. You and Jenny talk about it and see if there's anything they could talk about there.
I'm guessing our net would end up close to the same.
Now's the time to sell tractor. Farmers are getting ready to buy for spring. If there's that big of a demand.
But that machine's actually worked out very well. I mean, we paid 65,000 for it 10 years ago, and it's going to sell for 50 or better. I mean, that's 15,000 in 10 years. That's $1,500 a year to remove all the snow downtown. That's pretty reasonable.
Yeah. Well, gov deals, or not gov deals, just the government purchase programs are an awesome thing for the cities.
Yeah. We buy our equipment at what contractor would be paying for it when it's three years old, used.
Wish I could buy a truck, pick up trucks.
Don't we all?
Thank you.
Yep.
Next on the agenda is item E9, approved decertification of the Tiff District 1 through 12 for the Nisswa Senior Care. Jenny, you want to?
Yes. Yes. The reason we have a resolution, which is a little bit different than the normal decertification form you see from the county, is because this district has met its obligations early. And so we need a resolution to be able to close it out and finalize everything before the end of the year. It just makes our reporting easier come 2020. And so everything is good. They've received the money that they are able to, and now we're done with it.
Very good. Counsel, questions or motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the decertification of Tiff's District 1 through 2 for the Nisswa Senior Care.
12.
Or 1 through 12 for the Nisswa Senior Care. Second.
Mr. Hawke?
Is that correct, 1 through 12 or 1-12?
Technically, it's district number 12. The 1 represents the entire city, and then this was the 12th Tiff District. It's fine.
Just so we don't decertify the whole city.
No, no. It's just for the senior care. Number 12.
Number 12. Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item E11, memo from the city administrator Jenny Max regarding closing City Hall on the 24th.
Can you do number 10 first, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Geez. You checked that one off already. I was looking forward to 11. E10, approved tentative agreement terms for supervisor union 2020 and 2021 contract. Jenny, do you want to say anything or you just want to, or don't have to?
The terms are here for the council. Typically, you do receive the entire contract. This, the, our labor attorney gave me the. This, the, uh, our labor attorney gave me the okay to present this to you as the only changes, and the reason I'm asking for approval of this is so then I don't have payroll issues come January, and I can get everything ready to go. If you would like the final contract as information, I can include it in your January packet, but I just would approve the, the terms, these are the changes, only changes to the contract.
Question?
Go ahead.
Just so I understand, on the item, Article 16 compensation, I'm looking at the second line, says for 2021, the way I read this, on January 1st, 2021, everybody gets a 1.5% increase, plus if they do a step or whatever, they get that also?
Correct.
Okay, that's in January, then, on the, on July 1st of the same year, they get another 1.5%.
Correct.
So that's 3% in one year, plus a step?
Correct. The compromise for the city was that the 3%, um, absent all of the other variables that we worked through with our negotiations, but instead of taking, having 3% on January 1, it was split to be 1.5 for half the year, and then, and then 3% essentially come July 1, but the cost for the city is only 2 and 1/4, or something like that, so...
So for the term of the contract, the increase overall for two years would be, uh, 4.5%?
4.5% for cost of living, yes.
All right.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the tentative agreement, uh, terms for 2020-21 supervisor union contract as presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry. Item E. 11, I think it should be like E. 12, like the 12 Days of Christmas or something, we're stopping one day short. Well, of course, it is December 24th, so it is a day short, so... Memo regarding, um, closing, a request to close city hall on December 24th.
That's a, already given holiday, yes, so...
Only, uh...
No, I thought you wanted to swat.
Just for the record, just so, being, these guys are a little newer to the Public Works Committee, on the 25th, committee members, um, staff city hall.
With your fair...
Christmas Eve, uh, based upon the required use of leave time as applicable, uh, be no extra cost to the city.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Ryan. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no whole business tonight. Counsel reports next, uh, mayor's report. I did reach out to Ted Schaefer this, this month, um, to try to find a time to get together. Have not been able to pull that together. So, John, I've not forgotten about you, I just, uh, don't have any days that are options. I did talk with Ted the 4th, I believe it would be, Teddy, um, and, um, his initial response was very favorable. There is no plan for, um, that he's aware of, for the Schaefers to do anything different with building the property. Actually, his view was, uh, he would like to see us stay. So, but, he said but, he talked to the patriarch, so, um, I did receive a, I did receive a message from Ted the 3rd, and, um, he would like to get together sometime soon, but that's as far as, that's what I know.
Well, if my schedule just incited, that works for you guys, I'll just make it work or if I can't, yeah.
Sure. So that's all I have. Counsel? John, was there a, your end? Just call?
Uh, no, just, only thing for, I'm sure you guys have heard Parks and Rec, or Gull Lake Trail, back to the drawing board for next year, kind of, do not get the funding for the Gull Lake Trail.
You know, I, I don't need to, in the, in our notes, it was like, it said like the, we didn't get the funding for the trail, and then the very next line was almost like, I didn't understand, it was like some other topic, and then it kind of went back to the trail again. It was probably just me, but...
Okay.
But I, I did get the gist of it, so...
The committee were kind of reset, they're gonna, we have some, um, members from, um, the, the board.
Legacy.
Yes, so that we can get some feedback, and figure out how we can adjust to reapply, so, we'll follow up with information.
In the end, I mean, I, you know, it's just from what we've learned in the past, I don't think being turned down is necessarily a negative, it may be other than the fact it affects schedule, but, um, but it is a very, it is a very worthy project, I don't know that bears a sense that it's not a worthy project, it just, you're outstate Minnesota, and you, and you are a legislator and on the committee in St. Paul, people on there get their, get their ear, um, get their voices heard very easily, so...
We were just hoping to tie the Hazelwood Project all together, too, so...
Yeah. And that's another discussion, as to whether we, do we wait, or whatever, I mean, where, whatever, so, no need to go there, is that, yeah, you're right, though. Don?
Two, two items, Mr. Mayor. Jenny and I talked very, very briefly before everything began this evening. Special year-end, uh, meeting, when we have to get together by state law within, I think, 5 to 10 days, whatever it is, someplace in there, to, uh, to do our work, are we gonna, are you gonna send out an email, or how are you gonna handle that?
I'd be happy to send out an email with a couple options, and we'll get the organizational meeting scheduled for early January.
I think we'll, you know, my thought would be is, I think it's kind of been the custom of the city to hold that meeting the first week of the...
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure how the dates fall, but the first week, so maybe the first...
First is Wednesday, so it might be the following week, but early that's, early that second, yeah, right.
Whatever.
Look, do we want to do it on a Wednesday, or do we want to do it on Monday, or Thursday, or, um, any thoughts for Jenny on that?
No, I just didn't want to go, go by, forget the meeting.
Yeah, I'll check, um...
Jenny wouldn't allow that.
She said what meeting, when I talked to her. Um, second item, then, if she's gonna take care of that. I'm gonna be completely politically incorrect tonight.
Oh, my.
And I don't care if I am or not. I'm not gonna wish you happy holidays, because it's not a happy holiday. It's Christmas, and there's a reason it's called Christmas, we know the reason behind it, and it's been there for several hundreds, well, almost 2,000 years, and I just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everybody, and let's not forget the real reason that Christmas is here.
Thank you.
Sir, amen. Motion to adjourn?
So made.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys.
I seconded it.
Mike seconded.
Under my breath.
Yeah. I heard him, I heard him. I said, you, you looked at me, and I was like, yeah, okay, that's it.
The look.